...meeting on February 25th. I have a motion to approve this from February 25th. So moved. Second. I have a comment, a question, and a statement. Are there any comments, questions, concerns? Having none, all those in favor? I am the opposition. Do you need a motion to approve and hold the executive session minutes from February 25th? So moved. Second. I have a motion and a second. Any comments, questions, concerns? I mean, none, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposition? Okay. If you're coming in and think that you would like to speak, a comment from citizens and their faculty's portion, I'd ask you to sign up for Mrs. Rea at this time, please. Thank you. Public comment at school community meetings. All regular and special meetings in the school community should be open to the public. Executive sessions shall be held as prescribed by the statutes of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. The school committee desires individuals to attend its meetings so that they may become better acquainted with the operations and the programs of our local public schools. In addition, the committee would like the opportunity to hear public comment. Public comment is not a discussion, debate, or dialogue between individuals in the school committee. It is an individual's opportunity to express an opinion on issues within the school committee's authority. To mature the ability of the school committee to conduct the district's business in an orderly manner, the following rules and procedures are adopted. Number one, at the start of each regular school committee meeting, individuals will sign in for an opportunity to speak during public comment. The public comment segment shall not exceed 15 minutes. All speakers are encouraged to present their remarks in a respectful manner. Number two, speakers will be allowed up to three minutes to present their material and must begin their comments by stating their name and city or town. The presiding chair may permit extension of this time limit in extenuating circumstances. Number three, topics for discussions should not, should be limited to those items within the school committee's scope of authority. The authority of this school committee primarily concerns the review and approval of the budget of the district's (cough) public schools, the performance of the superintendent, and the educational goals and policies of the district's public schools. Comments and complaints regarding school personnel apart from the superintendent or students are generally prohibited unless those comments and complaints concern matters within the scope of the school committee's authority. The chair of the meeting, after reviewing, after warning, reserves the right to terminate speech which is not constitutionally protected because it constitutes true threats that are likely to provoke a violent reaction and cause a breach of the peace or incitement to imminent lawless conduct or contained obscenities. That was number four, I'm sorry. Number five, written comments longer than three minutes may be presented to the presiding chair before or after the meeting. All remarks will be addressed through the chair at the meeting. Comments made during the public comment section of the meeting do not necessarily reflect the views or positions of the Plankville School Committee. Number six, sign up instructions will be provided for those who wish to participate in public comment. And again, Mrs. Rea has the clipboard. At this time, are there any comments from citizens and/or faculty? Okay, having none, moving forward. Committee reports. King Philip?
Yep, last week, and we did do, it was a pretty quick meeting, actually. We voted on our budget and approved a budget at level service of 3.49% increase, took a couple of field trips, talked about student opportunities, added $7,000. $134 coming their way for professional development to work on (inaudible) curriculum, diversity instruction, SEO, universal design, and TSS. It was, it was fairly quick, but (inaudible) like a brief abbreviated budget update.
We met with teachers on March 2nd. We will fill you in when we go into a negotiation a little later on. The Paris meeting that we were supposed to have yesterday was proposed, was postponed. We will plan a later date, agreeable to both parties when we meet again. And we will be meeting with teachers again on March 23rd. Budgets. At this time, I just wanted to say (inaudible). Our recommendations, my recommendation along with Michelle and the subcommittee is to put our vote on our budget on hold because the selectmen are going to be having three public meetings moving forward on the 19th, 25th, and 31st. They still do not have anything set in stone yet on the override. They're waiting to get feedback from these meetings. So I feel that it's detrimental for us to vote a budget right now until we really know what we're facing moving forward. So we're recommending that we hold off. Communications?
So we were able to confirm two meeting greet dates and times today. We will be meeting March 23rd at Unlikely Story from 6:30 to 7:30 PM in the cafe, and again on April 1st from 10 to 11 AM, this time in the second story, and let's just base on their schedule. And we thank them for letting us speak there.
Perfect. Thank you. Any questions? Okay.
Very little to report. We are still struggling to close out the project. Our punch list, I think, is actually bigger now than it was when we started. We went through a process of walking through the buildings and making an extensive list and making sure that everything was really captured. So it's been a little bit of a struggle to close out the project, but we, you know, we want to close out the project. We're working very hard to make that happen. And you should see the Old Town Hall, the assistance remediation is actually started just this week. That's a three to three and a half week process, and then shortly thereafter, the building will be coming down. So I would expect somewhere around the 6th of April that the demo will start and we'll turn on.
Thank you, Maggie. Thank you, Maggie. For the notes. Second, anything? Michelle's not feeling well, so she's not filling the meeting. So, anything?
Mrs. Carol, we will have a meeting along this meeting. It's coming Thursday.
It's coming Thursday, yes. Thank you.
On the agenda is the food bank.
Okay.
And the next walk to school.
Is that going to be?
We have a side date.
The replacement for, okay.
Yeah, we have a side date.
We're going to do that.
Really, we're going to talk about, we're going to talk about the walk itself and responsibilities to make sure that it's a successful walk.
Perfect.
Basically, so we're going to tackle all the responsibilities needed to get that off the ground and decide a date that doesn't impact the two leaders in front of you on their outcast days.
I am, that's kind of similar to mine, too. Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Jackson.
I have a question about the budget. So, because my time is limited, it looks like we're going to be voting on the budget before I leave, so we have to, because I feel like I've spent all this time, I've been on all this effort, and now I'm not even going to get any vote on the budget this past year, of course. It's just concerning to me because I have the best of the law. So I'm just asking, the budgets are going to be, consider that as you ask us to postpone. I think we can, I think we can propose a budget that makes sense, and then you could always, what we, what we're voting for, you could always ask for more. You can't increase it, you can decrease it. So I don't know what the override has to do with what budget we would think this school committee versus what the town, whether or not there's an override. I guess it's just, just on that.
Okay. We can sit down with you to project the details. Okay, reservations, transfers, appointments, and needs?
We have three. Carol L. Clutch, one of our (inaudible) supervising (inaudible) professions, and Jackson has left us, and so we are in the process of going to position. And I think that will be happening, okay?
March 16th.
Right, March 16th. Also, one of our (inaudible) professionals has applied us that she's designing a position elsewhere, associate (inaudible) on the 18th. And Mrs. White has applied us that she could be retiring, retired for retirement purposes, as food service director for both Plankville and Retham. Now that will be effective at the end of the summer.
Will there be a joint posting for that?
Yes, I think we're having discussions already. Dr. King (inaudible) with that, so at the very least, I anticipate that it would still be over to communities. As with any time we have something like this with a shared position, we always have conversations with the bigger kid people, just to see if there's ever a possibility that we might move on to a split. Decisions that may not happen.
You are, you are having that a little.
We will, we will have that discussion, as we do from time to time with any types of position where we think it may be time to look at something that's across the region.
Do you think it's feasible for a position like that to be split across more than two districts?
I think it is. I think you always look at the structure underneath it, though, too. If it makes sense to do it across three districts for a director, you just want to make sure that often that will result in some additional responsibilities at the individual district level, to make sure everything gets signed, so that would be part of the conversation. Just on the superintendent's report, so although there was nothing in the packet, I think there is that, a few things haven't happened since that weekend. So first and foremost, just in terms of being ready to be up and running today, especially thankful and appreciative of our custodial staff, not only on Sunday, but yesterday, just in terms of one, their willingness to come in and do the bit, I mean, they had an option, they had a choice. They chose, every one of them chose to come in and work to get our buildings ready, especially appreciative of Norfolk. The shared facility director for the towns and the schools was very helpful through their superintendent. Not only did he and his deputy director come over, but they also sent some of their equipment over, as well as some manpower, so that we were able to get into the buildings yesterday with their equipment and spray our buildings down. So I'm very, very pleased that that happened. We do have, fortunately, our back ordered equipment, spray equipment of our own did come in this morning, so we now have that to be able to go forward. And that's something that we weren't looking specifically for the reasons this to begin, but typically, this time of year, lots of food going around, and so having that equipment is good for our district going forward, to be able to, especially on the weekends, when we have custodial staff in the building because of events that are going on in the building, to be able to have that, use that equipment, disinfect classrooms, hallways, and all of those things going forward. So that certainly was, I think, a very positive note, I think, today. Certainly, there was a bit of heightened anxiety, but all in all, it was a good day. Certainly, I'm thankful that, I certainly think, especially the younger children, it was just another school day for them. I'm sure in this building, probably with some of the older children, there's a little more anxiety than older things, and I'm sure the conversations in this building were a bit different. And I think staff did a great job, too, in terms of, I'm sure those things were addressed throughout the course of the day by each staff member. One thing that I was disappointed with is when I took a look at this morning's Sun article, and I wasn't surprised to see an article about our schools on the front page. What concerned me was the first sentence of the article written by Mr. Hand, and the first sentence said, "Plankville closed its two schools for a thorough cleaning Monday after it was discovered a parent had apparently contracted the coronavirus." That is absolutely not true, that I did send two briefing emails to Mr. Hand, no way that I indicate that. I told him that we were cleaning our schools. The article then goes on to say, in the message, he said, and he's quoting me, "In the message, he said a parent has been presumptively diagnosed with the virus and is awaiting test results." That is true, that is what I said, but I certainly feel those two statements are very different. I did put in a call to him this morning, left him a voicemail, I have not, but I am very concerned with that. I was, I'm sure today, both the principals and myself, received calls from parents who were very concerned, in some cases, decided to keep their kids home. I understand that, I respect that. Parents need to do what they feel is always best. I'm also pleased to say that the parents I spoke to today took a few minutes to explain the situation. All of them said to me, "My kids will be back tomorrow." This is a safe place for kids to come back to school, but I was very disappointed when that was the lead sentence in that article today, and that is absolutely not true. I don't know where that information came from, but certainly did not come from, from me or from my office. But we're back in, and I think that's a good thing. I did send out a message to parents today, because we do have three special activities going on this week. We have, we have a cultural night planned for Next Door tomorrow night. We have a recorder performance on Thursday during the day, and we have dear basketball here Friday night. Those are always big events, those events that bring in little children, parents, grandparents, and I did indicate that we've made the decision to postpone those. One, because of the efforts that we've made to get as many germs out of this building as possible. Also, some additional guidance that came from the CDC that said schools should refrain from having large gatherings right now, and if you can postpone them, that's in your best interest. So we will postpone them, we will hold them, those are important events to us, and they will happen this school year, but just not right now.
New business, Bay State Textiles, a gift of $50. I need a motion to approve the $50 for Bay State Textiles to use for future technology purchases. So moved. Second, I have a motion and a second. Any comments, questions, concerns? I mean, none, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposition? No. And I just want to thank the people that donated to that. That was a nice thing for them to do. Okay. Updated teacher evaluation rubric.
So the teacher evaluation committee met in January, again, recently last week. This summer, the Department of Ed revised its classroom teacher evaluation rubric. So the committee spent time reviewing that rubric, comparing it to our current, the current rubric we use for classroom teachers. Felt that the new document that the Department of Ed put out was a very, was a quality document, was very concise, and they did a very good job of clarifying some of the terminology. We did go through it, box by box. There were a couple of places where we felt we wanted to revise the language slightly to make it even clearer. Those changes were made in this document, but the teacher evaluation committee was recommending both to the school committee and let us up to the Plankville Education Association, that both bodies consider it and hopefully approve it. If approved by both groups, it would basically be effective within the school year. This is, this rubric is one of, I think, six or seven we have in the district. We have one for instruction support personnel, we have one for coaches, we have one for nurses, for therapists, library media, school psychologists. So in the coming months, we have some small group work that will happen during the months of March, and I believe early to mid-April, reviewing all of those documents. The teacher evaluation committee will then reconvene in early May to review any proposed changes to those documents, and then, if necessary, bring them back to the school committee, to the PBA, with the plan being that any revised documents will become, will be in place and ready to go at the start of the school year. So with that, I have a passage of this for the teacher evaluation committee.
I need a motion to approve the updated classroom teachers' rubric as presenting. So moved. Second, I have a motion and a second. Any comments, questions, concerns?
I would just add that if you look at Area 4 Professional Culture, and 4, subsection 4 F1, and 4 F2, that's not a mistake, that you see a box that's empty. The committee basically felt that what the description of proficiency in those two areas is the best it's going, the best it can be in those particular two areas, so it didn't make sense to try to come up with some other terminology, for example, that in those two areas, if you're proficient, you're demonstrating the top performance in those two areas.
Any questions? Any or not, any comments, questions, concerns? I mean, none, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposition? Thank you. And administrative restructure.
So this is something that I brought forward for discussion. Notice I did, this is not something I put on for vote tonight, this is something that I think I'm just looking for more feedback on. This is something that I've had numerous conversations with the administrative team about, we've talked about this from time to time this year. So one of the areas where I feel that we have not been able to give as much time and focus as we need to is the area of curriculum. And I know when you look at our neighboring districts, you're going to look at a Retham that put in the position of curriculum director there, in addition to their assistant principals, their principals, their special education director, and the superintendent. They've added that. Norfolk's model is slightly different in that they've had assistant principals in both of their schools for a number of years, who 50% of their responsibility is being the assistant principal for the school, and 50% of their responsibility is overseeing curriculum for the district. KP, you will see, has an assistant superintendent, one of her prime responsibilities is curriculum. It's always been challenging here, I think, to find, find a way to give that enough attention. For a number of years, we used the model where the work has been co-led by one of the principals and a coach. And still with that, I think, from both a supervision and evaluation point of view, we just haven't been able to give it its just due. So what I'm proposing here is that we put in the position of director of curriculum. And I think when I looked at the current responsibilities of our administrators, and then I'm looking at projected, there are, so, for example, I know, in the current structure, the director of student services, also known as the special education administrator, in districts, districts, this district for a number of years has had other responsibilities in special education. They've done busing, they've done health and wellness, they've done homeless, they've overseen grants. And I do know that prior to my time in this district, that was part-time position, and then it became a full-time position, but with all those added responsibilities. So in the new structure, I would oppose moving busing back to the principal side, moving health and wellness onto the plate of a new curriculum person, as well as professional development. And I think, when I look at the work of curriculum, especially implementing the curriculum, I look at that as going hand in hand with professional development. So I do think we would be better served with having a full-time technology director, and under this model, we would reduce the position of director of student services to a three-day position, a 0.6 position, actually, which is how we're now running it on a (inaudible) basis. The other change that I think we should look at is, we have a director of maintenance and custodial services, just a little bit of the history, for many years, it was part of the union, the custodial union. A number of years ago, it came out of the union as an administrative position, as an administrative position. And the hope was that, in some conversations that I had with our town administrator, is that we would move, be moved to a shared director of facilities position that would open, that would basically oversee the facilities and grounds of both the town as well as the schools. Very similar, and I mentioned, in Norfolk, (inaudible). Okay. I don't, in recent conversations with the town and given their budget situation, I don't see the feasibility of the town being able to share in those, the resources to support that position. But I do feel, given the current budget situation, that it would be prudent to eliminate that position. However, I would also want to make sure that we can put some money into contracted services in the area of maintenance. I certainly don't have the knowledge of our building systems that is required to be able to know our heating system, when to bring in an electrician, and when do we need tiling services beyond our custodial staff. And so I would want to be able to hire somebody, one that could check on our buildings on weekends, as well as being available should we need to have somebody to come in and do some analysis of (inaudible). I do think that the other responsibility that that individual currently (inaudible) has is supervision and evaluation of custodial staff. I think, in the short term, that's something that can go over, and it would be something that is shared by myself, and to some extent, would be (inaudible). And so those are changes that I, that I think can be made, and it would get us started in terms of, I think, better addressing the curriculum piece, and then also starting to move us forward with the facilities piece, to be able to hopefully (inaudible), also be able to increase that position, but also have resources to go with it. I also did, in addition to putting this chart together on what would go where, I also did some projected financials on it, because part of this, of the new administrative structure would also put us in a position where I would eliminate the two coaching positions, so we could go through a reduction in force for those positions. And so accounting for that, as well as these changes, I'm projecting that it would accomplish a savings of about $134,000. If you were to apply that to our current level services budget, which is a budget with a 5.7% increase, this would bring that increase down to approximately 4%. I think it's something we can move forward with, and I think it doesn't get us all the way there, it recognizes, I think, the situation we're in, but at the same time, it does move us in a positive direction in terms of curriculum. And my hope is that, within another year, we'd be able to work with it to increase the facility position to be a shared position, but also a shared, shared financially, not also shared in terms of, in terms of time. So those were my thoughts, and so questions, comments, your thoughts?
Well, same here with my thoughts initially. I'm not comfortable with a 0.6 to (inaudible). I feel like, for anybody that's ever worked part-time, you need the district to come back in and take a day to catch up on everything that you missed. I think it's, it's a big role to only have working part-time. I don't see, I feel like they should be part of the assessment process. They are also responsible, who's responsible for 504s right now?
Who's responsible?
So I think.
They have some on time.
Director of Student Services, I think that should shift over, back to Director of Student Services, and that will, because they're not just doing special education anymore, but whether or not you choose to do that. And I sent you an email with a bunch of questions, so that I was hoping you might address.
Yeah, the evaluation, so that is, that is something that each of them share right now, in terms of the evaluation. And so roughly, it never comes out perfectly even, but basically, you take all of the teaching staff and all of the support staff, the Paris, and the two of us, and the special education assistants, and they're generally distributed to about a third for each of the individuals. I, when I look at that, I, and certainly, I think it's a good question in terms of supervision and evaluation, because now you're saying, well, now we have 2.6. But.
services in that role, because they're not just doing special education anymore, but whether or not you choose to do that. And I sent you an email with a bunch of questions, so that I was hoping you might address.
Yeah, the evaluation, so that is, that is something that each of them share right now, in terms of the evaluation. And so roughly, it never comes out perfectly even, but basically, you take all of the teaching staff and all of the support staff, the pairs and the tours and the special education assistance, and they're generally distributed to about a third for each of the individuals. I, when I look at that, I, and certainly, I think it's a good question in terms of supervision and evaluation, because now you say, well, now we have 0.6. But director of curriculum would also be a person, would be an administrator of the district. And certainly, would be some, that would be assigned evaluation responsibilities. So in terms of the number of people who would be involved in evaluations, the number, administratively in terms of FTE actually increases slightly. So I'm not concerned about that, because I think there are ample people that would be able to do that piece of it. Obviously, the 504s, I understand, I think it's best that, that, that's something that would be, it's better handled by that internal.
Well, I just feel like with these adjustments, we, my, I have a couple of concerns, and I don't know that I'm voicing that clearly enough, but we, I, I feel, and you may not feel this way, but it's how I feel, that we're giving, continuing to give more to the principals to do, and we're taking some, some things away. We're talking about a gap between our special education, student success, and our general education student success, and now we're going to take our director of student services and remove them from a piece of all the planning and curriculum development and all that stuff, and not have that voice clearly heard. We're just, it doesn't feel comfortable to me to do that in our district. And I, and I advocate for the director of curriculum, I think that's a great addition, and I think all the other things that you propose make sense, but I don't understand why this one couldn't be, continue to be a full-time position, because I think it's an important role in any district to have someone full-time advocating with and among the other administrators in the building, in the, in the district. So I'm not comfortable with that. If there's, if there's a way to keep it full-time and also add the director of curriculum, then I would advocate for that.
I know you asked the question about coaching too, which obviously, you don't see coaching positions on here, but did my explanation kind of express that the, the coaching positions would be reduced?
No, you, right, but whatever the coaches do now, how does that transfer into the role of the director of curriculum? They're all, that one person is now going to become also a coach?
No. I mean, well, I say no, and I say yes. I think, I think to some extent, anybody in the administrative position has some coaching responsibilities too. I think you, you want, certainly you understand that in terms of that. But in turn, just in terms of being, obviously, the, right now, based, what I looked at is who they were supporting most, okay? And so collecting some data and information on the, because that, part of that relationship is also one where it also, it's a mutual relationship between the coach and the teacher. It's going to be something where the teacher is also is seeking that assistance. Coaches can offer it, but also has to be so, it can't be a false situation. And so I've been looking at the last couple of years, and especially with our models, some model changes we did with coaches, our spending sometimes with some of our staff in terms of the two weeks on a regular basis, meaning over a two-week period, constantly looking at planning, and then running activities, and debriefing, and that type of thing. And basically, the information I've seen says that that happens with less than half of the staff. Not that they don't meet with people, they do, they meet with teams, they meet periodically, but those that they meet with on a constant or a much more regular basis, it's less than half of the staff. So I'm looking at that model, and I'm also saying, we have that model, which I think if, if they were meeting with many more people on a more regular basis, I don't see myself going here. So I kind of say, in that, we're not best utilizing time, and so, and then we're not finding the time really to spend on the curriculum and somebody to make sure the maps are, you know, getting that back information and reflecting in, changes to curriculum, bringing it back to me, bringing it back to this body for revision, and we really need to, to spend more time on that, those facets of it. And I think that's something in talking to my colleagues, happens more regularly since they put in positions that have administrative curriculum responsibilities. And those people also help in the supervision. So they, they also have opportunities to see that the curriculum that's in place is also happening in the classroom.
That makes sense.
Okay, thanks. You also asked about consulting services?
Yeah, yeah.
And so in terms of, when I came up with that figure, $134,000, that was with setting aside $30,000 for consultant services. That's the figure that I had in mind for support in the, in the area of maintenance. I think I hit the ones who, who sent me.
Let me check, let me check my settings.
Yeah. You did ask, who would parents know who to call for bus issue?
Well, that was a concern for me too. Not that busing shouldn't be moved, but that, so it's not the principals?
Right now, right now, it's Mrs. Campbell.
But if you do it next year, and split between the two of them, how would, how would people know who to call for what bus is going to be? If your bus is 1357, it's this principal?
We will really keep it as one person, and the other person as another. But I feel like, even we had an issue last week, we kind of worked in tandem, but I was just the go-to in those. And I think we're, we're going to have to be like this person, designed this, and this person.
Yeah. I don't like it, not because I don't trust you, I just feel like you, there's a lot in running, you're not, trust you. There's just so much, there's so much in running a building that to then have to deal with a bus issue when something else is going on in the building, you can't, as much as you want to.
We do all the bus issues anyhow.
But that might have been passed for other reasons. So my concern is that, like I said earlier, more things are being put on the two of you than maybe should be, not because you're not good at what you do, but because you're good at what you do, and that's not fair. I don't think that's fair. You don't have to agree with me, I'm just saying that's how I feel. Have you been on here for, huh? Right, but like, have you been here for, what, like nine years? I've seen the responsibilities continue to increase, and I don't, trying to advocate for it. How did, how did the, how did the other districts, do they have part-time directors of student services, did you say?
No, they do not.
They do?
They cover them.
They do not?
Yes.
Is there a point in this that probably allows?
I will let you ask a question, because everyone else off, just state your name, please, at this time.
Okay.
Right now?
Ten chance in 23 come on a light plan though. I don't necessarily understand all the functions that Mr. Raish just went over, but it sounds like some things are being cut, and we're trying to get some things, some services into the school. What was the main objective of that exercise of Mr. Raish's do? Was it to come up with budget savings, or was it to come up with the appropriate level of services that the schools require?
Well, what happened is, is we have, our director of custodial staff will be retiring in the first of September, so for next year, right now, we're looking as to how we're going to fill that. So Mr. Raish looked at that and is giving us a recommendation as to what his thoughts are there. Also, as far as the director of student services, we now have an interim, which is part-time, because our director of support services left us and went to another district. So we're talking again about moving forward, Mr. Raish has explained those. So that is what's facilitated this discussion here tonight, and it's a conversation we will continue to have moving forward. I hope that ends up some requests, we can, you.
I just want to be clear that the school committee did not directly do administrative restructuring to save money, okay? That's not what happened.
Thank you for that. Thank you.
So certainly, it would have been, it would have been nice to come forward with a plan if we didn't have budget issues, okay? But at the same time, I still think that we need to take a look at this, especially around the topic of curriculum. And I think if we just put that on hold, we could be putting that on hold for quite some time. So I, I think there's a way to recognize that we have some budget issues to work with, okay? But at the same time, I still think we need to address things in curriculum. I think, I think gave me a raise in good points. You've got to be cap. If you're a dr, do you want to solve this problem and create more of a problem here? And we don't want to, but I think that's the whole point of having these conversations, is that, that people can be heard, and we can make sure we're aware of all the concerns, and reassure that any change, if there is a change that goes forward, it's keeping those kinds of things, those kinds of things in mind. I mean, I'm not, I don't kind of look at this, I, I think in some ways, more so with the director of maintenance position, it's a slight reduction in services, okay? But at the same time, I also think it recognizes, I've got somebody that is going to retire. The hope is that in the near future, we can do something with the, with the town. I'd be concerned about, I mean, yes, we could keep it the way it is, and I could try to find an interim, but it's almost like, I'll be better served to start going in that direction with the hope that then the town and the schools could kind of complete that picture in the future.
I appreciate the explanation, because you asked me an idea of the challenges you've faced as you, having retirements and, you know, gaps in some of your interim positions. So it's, it's always a moving, a moving target.
Any more sense?
Yes, I.
Does anyone else have any questions regarding this, before we move on?
Maybe you think you could do, you just have a little less savings if you move the director back up to a full-time position, it would just cut the savings from 135 to some smaller number?
Yeah, yes.
But there's still be some amount of savings.
But my thought is to move this back to the budget subcommittee, basically, so we can take, we'll have some questions that we're going to raise, so we can further discuss it. Thank you.
Moving forward, the update on our tenure capital plan?
So I have been asked by the town administrator to resubmit the capital plan. And so, as I explained here, I think the things that were in last year's plan should remain in place. The only thing I've added in this plan would be the weatherization of this school. We continue to have the Jackson School in the plan, and that's in for the next several years, but then in years eight, nine, and 10, I think there's room in our plan to address weatherization improvements here in this building. And so that's why I've added in estimates of $30,000 in fiscal year, I can't believe this, fiscal year '28, '29, '30, to address, address those, okay? That being said, I certainly, from my conversations with the town administrator, believe that there is, there is additional money for capital expenses for fiscal year '21. So the $50,000 in this plan for lighting upgrades, and the $150,000 in this plan for next year for continuing the renovations for heating and cooling systems, I don't see that the likelihood that there, that there is, the town is going to be able to go after that money for next year. My understanding is that there is some consideration being given, I think, in the, I want to say, the water department, but that would not be through, that would come through water rate use. So that any capital projects, I think, that will be considered by the town for next year would be those that would come through the normal tax rate, that would come through ease of fees.
So you have listed the replacement, and you updated the heating system at Jackson, which probably is a lifetime issue, as $150,000. How much do we, would you say over the last, or maybe over the next, you have listed, you have, it's $150,000 each year, or like, so we do this year now, or the next year now? Is it a cumulative total, or is it?
No. That's money that's needed each year. Now, one thing, when you look at that figure, that you can, you should keep in mind, is that I can't assume green community's monies at this point. Certainly, if we were successful in getting green community's money going forward, that number would go down. $50 is our estimate for what it would cost to move to the next section of the building. And that doesn't take into account, you might get incentives for national grid, that doesn't take into account green community money. That would be, if we had, if the town had to take all of that building on themselves with no other resources, that's what we estimate the cost to do.
So $620,000 over the three years, would be the, the four years, sorry, would be the total. What would you estimate in maybe each year, or over the course of those four years would be repairs that have to be done on that? So like, if you have $150,000 for this year for '21, what would, what would you guess we might pay in repairs for if we don't replace it?
I, well, I'd rather not guess, but certainly, that's something, very soon we can bring back to you. Certainly, we can take a look at the current year as well, as I'd say, the past three years in terms of what we paid individuals to come in and keep our systems up and running.
I think it's important, because even though the town may not have money, if we're paying around $150,000 or close to that in repairs, not just at some point, replace it.
And I do know, at the end of the information I'll bring back to, is I do know, we've been tracking this, that the amount of money we're spending for gas, and, and I'm not just saying, let me take that back, the amount of gas we're using, because we don't look at just at how much we spend, because sometimes it's hard to judge because of the rates, but the amount that we're using has increased, okay? And so, to give you an example, a couple summers ago, in the modules in Jackson School, that used to be heating with gas. The new units in there are electric. So we eliminated gas. However, in that building, we're still using it as much, if not more, gas. And you say, why? Because we have to keep that building, the heating and cooling system on 365 days a year, 24/7, for it to operate in any way, shape, or form.
So what about?
So that, that's, I think, a perfect example where we made some improvements, we have an energy-efficient system in that section of the building, but yet, we're still using more gas than we used to.
Right, so I have two questions. And you don't have to answer them, they're just thrown out there. What about solar? So, you know, looking into putting some solar panels on the roofs to help with the electric bill. And the second one is, so solar, and the second one is, the second one's really good. I know the town, this isn't for us to answer, just something I'm throwing out there, the town has taken loans for other things. So taking loans for us to be able to replace the heat because, or the heating system, because it's an issue, and it has been for as long as my kids have been here, and my son's, uh, something like that, so.
We, I can tell you that it's been a few years, but we had looked in past years at seeing if we could add solar on our property. We kind of staying away from the roofs only because of the warranties on our roofs. But we were also told that companies did come in and take a look at it, we don't have enough land in the right places, all right, to, to be able, that we were better from that. So that didn't seem feasible at the time.
Even the, even the solar canopies, the freestanding solar canopies?
And so I don't know if, if technology has changed so much that, that might be something we want to relook at, but, and again, this was probably seven, eight years ago, we looked at it and pretty much told that it didn't make sense, the expense, that you wouldn't get that much back from it in terms of that. But certainly, at least for informational purposes, we can bring some information back in terms of our use. I do know that when we, when we're looking at the electricity, that the lights that have changed, we have, I believe, about six months now of comparative data from looking at each building a year ago to now, and there's been a significant decrease in the 1 kilowatt-hours in each building with the lighting. And lighting is just part of the electricity. We know a big part of it is actually the motors that run everything there. And so we've made some headway in that, also in this building, with some of the motors on the roofs, but obviously, the hope going forward next though with these systems is they would be, they would be much more efficient systems. And when, obviously, there didn't, boys in this building had so much more energy efficiency, they were expected to start to reap some benefits from that.
What's the other thing? The cost of repairing and the cost of paying for, what we pay for every year, the supportive cost, whether or not the town, since they've taken loans for other departments, we take, potentially take a loan for it, and the freestanding solar canopies that other districts are putting up, they park under, so they have a multi-use functionality.
Okay. That happens to be my background, this is definitely she controls the facilities management. So this is, the thing you read in the beginning, this may be my opinion, if I wander off too much, it's worth a second, bring me back. These buildings, I've seen this happen in industry, cut, 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 the call for maintenance, it's the easiest thing to do, just go and take care of your building. Councils love it because they want to write the check. These buildings are town assets, these are assets of the taxpayers. For the town not to take care of them properly is, is completely wrong. It's the easiest thing to do, it's cut. It's the easiest thing to do, it's not. These are twenty years old now?
Close.
Approximately?
Little seventeen.
Is that, is that about right?
You're about sixteen, seventeen.
Cut me off, like, go too long. What happens is everyone thinks of them as the new schools, right? The new schools, and they're beautiful, and they're well-maintained, and it's great, but they are not new anymore. Big commercial buildings have, you know, come, they have a fifth, about a fifty-year lifespan, other than out of our place, before they're trying, you know, they can stretch these, right? But you can see what can happen. I've been trying to, um, have some say in the fact that the town has to borrow money to put money into its assets. We have a beautiful town hall, that's, that's making me wonder, but these are the act, they have to be, they have to be maintained, part of that is investing in backing up. You could, there's a lot of industry groups, like ASRAI, which is the Heating and Air Conditioning Engineer Group around the world, they will tell you life cycle for equipment, and heating equipment, air conditioning equipment, anywhere between fifteen and thirty years. So some of these air conditioners you have here are probably past life's, you know, known life cycle. So I, I, I really don't want to see this maintenance, this capital investment, keep getting deferred, and the town saying it's because of budgets and no money. It is their responsibility to take care of these buildings. You're doing the best you can with the staff you have, but you can't, you know, neither can the school committee write itself a fifty thousand dollar check. Now, that being said, the townspeople are the legislators here, we can put a, we can put something into the town meeting to get this, to get this money. I think that's not fair. So I want, I want the town to take care of these, these are assets, they're expensive, and they were a lot cheaper to build then than they are now. Imagine how much they would be now. So we're lucky to have it, we're lucky to have it.
Does anyone else have anything to add?
I like your point that fifteen years is, is old, when you're thinking of these big buildings, as everyone keeps saying, they were just built, and it's okay.
And, and so the frame is different, because you, what you, it's what you don't see sometimes. You see the painted walls and the well-kept floors and all that.
Well, we have to remember, Jackson would add on in an upgrade, but the existing building was back in the nineteen-sixties.
Is that it? Okay.
So that's not a brand-new building, that was a reconstructed building.
So, any of its core air conditioning equipment, electrical equipment, and roof, that's the, you know, we have to prioritize it, but that's good, thanks for, that's good information. That was, that was the only thing.
Okay. If there's nothing else, I would like to add. No, I, that's, that's just good. Just want to make sure you're heard and that we're not, okay. If there's nothing, I need a motion to approve the revised tenure capital plan as presented. Second, I have a motion in a second. Any more questions concerned, to perform the, the votes in favor? Am I any acquisition? Thank you. Any resources for that?
So, um, I became aware early this year in conversations with the town administrator that they were conducting an HR audit on their side of town, and that they had secured the services of a president, a leadership that's in run, that's been before, and that Jen Thompson was very pleased with the work she was doing. So I invited her to communicate with myself, with Karen Sue, we met, we had a good conversation, she told me, offered background and experience, we felt that she could come with a good job for us, and so she came in over a couple of days and then took lots of information from us, spent a, got a lot of time outside here, looking at information we provided her, doing some research, and basically came back with a report for us. In the report, there were fifteen areas that she checked in terms of our compliance with HR regulations in the US, and also with our, and our policies. She rated, rated us as being compliant with all fifteen areas. She was also very, if I can be like this, Todd, she was also very complimentary of the policies.
It's our fifth year.
Okay. And she did have a couple of suggestions as far as our method for workers' comp and those types of things. So there were a couple of suggestions she made that we are, this year would be helpful in terms of showing that we are following up with it, incorporating it into our practices as we want to finish, continue this year, and also get ready for school year. So, um, across the district, and we, I took it out of contracts and services in the, in the administrative section, it was only about a hundred dollars, I thought it was a lot spent. Want to confirm our practices, that we are in compliance with regulations, that we have good practices in place, and also some suggestions in terms of the report and all that. We also discussed, and I think having her there and looking at the town side as well as the school side, because one of the thoughts I had was this something that we needed to merge, and I think, I think we have very different responsibilities, and so I think it's best that we handle the HR matters ourself, for the school district, and the town, and the area's matters themselves. I mean, a lot, enough commonality to me that would make sense, that we would bring an HR director for the town at this, at this point. I know one of her final recommendations to me was, well, you would bring in your own HR president, and I said, and then I wouldn't have the pleasure of working with Mrs. Rea and Mrs. Ketchum on all of these things together. So I said, maybe that's something that superintendent could take up, but right now, that's not something I think we're positioned for, but I, I am pleased to see that the practices are in place and that we'll keep, we'll keep them going.
Next up on the list is superintendent's contract. We will be going into executive sessions to talk about this contract later. How we expect that. Does anyone have any advice about this? I do know we received a postcard for a day on the hill, to remain with any other personnel in the county, and so we should be able to pass. And are there opening up, opening up to add? And is there any items that were not discutative at the time of posting? Anything to add?
It's the day on the hill.
Yeah. If there's nothing else, um, a motion to go into executive sessions for the purpose of discussing contract negotiations with non-union personnel, and to discuss collective bargaining strategies which have held in open sessions might hurt the community's bargaining position, we will reconvene in open session to talk about Dave's contract before we adjourn.